I'd like to call the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three Lacy School Board Meeting to order. Would you please stand to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and by posting the notice in the Forked River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy, thank you, of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Mrs. Ornsby, could I please have roll call for attendance?
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Conady?
Here.
Mr. Armato?
Good evening, I'm here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Polino? Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mrs. Downing?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Executive session.
Be it resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying; confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload; confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of this executive session is estimated to be approximately sixty minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at seven P. M. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion, Peters.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to resume our November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting. I'm going to ask our student representatives to... Is there one or two over there? I can't see.
Just one.
Okay, are you ready to give your report?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Homecoming was a huge success. I'd like to thank everyone who helped. We are planning Battle of the Classes, which is going to be the eighteenth to the twenty-second of December, and our theme's going to be music genres, and it consists of country, pop, rock, and hip-hop. We're working on our spirit days, and Monday, December fourth, is going to be our next SGA meeting, and I'd like to introduce our November unsung hero of the month. One second.
I'd like to introduce Jordan Tilton to the podium. For the month of November, the Student Government Association would like to recognize Jordan Tilton as our unsung hero of the month. Jordan is very active in our school community, playing both field hockey and lacrosse throughout the year. Simultaneously, she's a member of the Leadership Academy of Humanities and challenges herself with many difficult honors and APs. Outside of school, Jordan plays field hockey for Phoenix Elite and volunteers to help kids with mixed martial arts training. With her busy schedule, she's still able to maintain good academic standing and promote school spirit. For these reasons, Jordan Tilton has been chosen as November's unsung hero.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to turn the microphone and the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Herrera.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can everybody hear me?
Of course.
Yeah? Okay, great. All right, welcome to our November Board Meeting. It's hard to believe we're in November already. It's crazy how the time flies. Charlotte, thank you for being here tonight with us. I'm certain Anthony's not here, right? Because he's in the play?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll talk about that a little bit later. All right, congratulations also to Jordan and her family. I'm assuming this is your family down here? All right, round of applause to you and Mrs. Claus. Couldn't do it alone.
They look like twins.
They do, yeah. Yeah, she couldn't do it alone, right? Support from her family, so congratulations to you and to all of you. All right, so before I begin my comments, I just want to take a moment to congratulate Mrs. Claus for her win in the election. I look forward to our continued work, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Daniel Bell, who will be joining us in January, and at the same time, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mr. Polino for all of his years of service, dedication to the students and families of our district. Round of applause to you, Mr. Polino.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we say it a lot, but the work that our board members do is volunteer work. They're not up here getting a paycheck, and we have lots of meetings every month, including this board meeting, and we always thank you for your collaboration and your dedication to all of our students. All right, I am now going to turn it over to Mr. King for his presentation for our November Seniors of the Month.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I want to bring us back one year when I stood on this podium, as my third, I guess, Senior of the Month presentation, was a little still nervous, not sure how it was going to go, and I started reading the first name, and out of the corner of my eye, I saw a flashing white light, and then the fire alarm went off because we had a play the same evening, and the smoke machine was set to inferno instead of medium. So I've been told and promised there's no smoke machine this evening. With that being said, if that goes off, we do need to go out because something's going on. So, all right, with that being said, I'm here to present our November Seniors of the Month. Our first senior of the month is Sila Marazek, Sila, come on down. A round of applause for her family, who's in attendance this evening, so everybody watch a short video on her accomplishments.
Hello, we're here to celebrate our November Seniors of the Month. Our first senior of the month is Sila Marazek.
I'm Sila Marazek, and I'm proud to be November's Student of the Month for Lacy Township High School.
Congratulations, Sila Marazek, on being named Senior of the Month.
I'm very proud to recognize Sila Marazek as November Senior of the Month.
Here at LTHS, I'm part of Heroes and Cool Kids Interact Club, DECA, FBLA, and I'm part of the Executive Board on SGA.
You know, since you started your freshman year in the STEM Academy, you were quiet, reserved, and I thought you were that type of person, but you're really not. You're that silent leader that's always been the person in the back of the room that has been leading the class. You were quiet, reserved, no, not at all. You're outgoing, you're caring, sympathetic, hardworking, goal-oriented, you are an absolute rock star.
One of my favorite memories here at LTHS is being part of Mrs. Singer's fashion design class.
Sila's an amazing student. She's a top ten here at Lacy, and she's got nothing but AP classes, which makes it all the more difficult for her. The first thing that strikes me about Sila is that she's never seems to have a bad day. She's always in a good mood, she's a genuinely nice person.
After high school, I plan to attend a four-year college and get a degree in accounting with a minor in actuarial science.
Now you're senior year, moving into your freshman year of college, into accounting and possibly actuarial science as your master's degree, that's because you're the type of person who is goal-oriented and loves to look deeper into the statistics. That's what I really like about you. Since your senior year, you're capstone right now, I cannot wait to see what you produce for your science fair. Moving into your freshman year of college next year, I know you're going to do fantastic.
Outside of school, I like to volunteer a lot of my time at my local church, and I also like to spend time with my friends at the beach.
So congratulations once again, Sila, on winning Senior of the Month, it's well deserved.
Again, Sila, here's to you, congratulations on making Senior of the Month.
It gives me great pleasure to announce our next senior of the month, Brody Sager. Brody, come on up. We're going to watch a short video on his accomplishments now.
Congratulations, Sila. Our next senior of the month is Brody Sager.
Hi, I'm Brody, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Congratulations, Brody Sager, on winning Senior of the Month, well deserved. I just want to congratulate Brody Sager for earning the Senior of the Month Award.
The main clubs I do at LTHS are wrestling and track, if they're shot put and discus.
This award is definitely earned for Brody Sager. He's a hard-working kid, sets great goals for himself, and he works to accomplish those goals, something that sets him apart from the rest of our student body or the athletes that I coach. It's just his mental toughness and his resilience. You know, Brody, since you were a freshman, not much has changed, except your sheer mass and size. Your hair, though, hasn't changed at all. Character-wise, man, you're still funny, hardworking, goal-oriented, and you are a natural leader. You like to take things head-on, and you do that not only in the classroom, but also on the wrestling mat. That's what I really love about you. You're one of those kinds of kids that not only sees a challenge, but sees an opportunity at the end of that challenge to make sure to grow as an individual.
Some of my favorite memories, for one, wrestling last year, when we went against Rancoas Valley, my first varsity win was against a state qualifier, so that was pretty awesome, and I'd just say anything in Larry's class, pretty much, or Sotero's.
We wrestled in Rancoas Valley last season in a comeback duel-type of format. He went out and pinned their heavyweight to kind of clinch our duel. Their heavyweight was a returning region qualifier, stuttered their team, and at that moment, Brody Sager was a first-year starter. Ended up breaking his opponent, getting him tired, and getting the fall for the lines.
Outside of school, I like to lift weights on big weightlifters. That's how I spend the majority of my time. On top of that, I also like hiking and photography, that's about it.
Last year and this year especially, you and I have grown pretty fond of each other. Spending time during lunch, moving through after-school, helping you with your reference letters and those kinds of things, just so you can move on to that next level, I cannot wait to see what you do.
After high school, I plan to study mechanical engineering at either Stevens or NJIT.
So congratulations once again, big Brody, on winning Senior of the Month. Again, just to congratulate Brody Sager again for earning this award, I'm proud of you, kid, and we have a lot of fun coming up in the next few months. Get ready.
And a round of applause for his parents who are here this evening as well, thank you all. Our vocational senior of the month this month is Kaitlyn Morehouse. Kaitlyn, come on down. Her parents are here as well, so please. And now we'll watch a video on Kaitlyn's accomplishments.
And our vocational senior of the month is Kaitlyn Morehouse. Congratulations.
My name is Kaitlyn Morehouse, and I'm proud to be named November Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Congratulations, Kaitlyn, on winning Student of the Month for the month of November.
Congratulations, Kaitlyn, on winning November Senior of the Month.
A sport I'm involved in at LTHS is I'm on the cheerleading team.
She is a very dedicated and hard-working student who is constantly striving to do her best.
Some of the things that set you apart from others and why you're so deserving of this honor is your drive and dedication to your work and after-school activities, and most of all, your caring heart.
My favorite memory of high school is hanging out with my friends.
So one thing I do remember is in geometry class, I remember you walking in my classroom, and I sat here, and I saw this cheerleader, and I said to myself, "How is this girl a cheerleader? She is so quiet." And then one day, I guess we can thank Brendan for that, you came out of your shell and your true personality was shining through the classroom. Your smile is contagious, your laughter is contagious, and I loved every minute of having you in class.
Outside of school, I like to go to the beach, hang out with friends, and go shopping.
Kaitlyn always comes into my class with a very positive attitude and willing to work for whatever she needs to do.
My plans after high school is to go to college and then go to dental school to be orthodontist.
Congratulations again on winning Student of the Month.
Kaitlyn, I wish you all the best on your future endeavors and your senior year, and again, congratulations on November Senior of the Month.
All right, Dr. Brendan, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. King, and another round of applause for our seniors of the month. All right, every month, I always say behind every successful student is an amazing teacher who, or staff member, who helped him or her get there, so now it's time for our Staff Members of the Month. The first Staff Member of the Month I am going to talk about unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, she had another commitment. I did tell her we were still going to show her video and that I would bring her her plaque tomorrow, but I'm going to say a little bit about Brenda Kamaligan, who is a teacher at the Forked River School. She was nominated by her colleague, Ms. Schaefer. Brenda is one of the most enthusiastic people I know. She brings so much joy and spirit into her classroom. She works with the teachers on her grade level to plan and is always on top of best practices, sharing with everyone. She is at work early each morning, and oftentimes you will find her there late, planning lessons based on students' instructional needs. She dives deep into the data and is constantly utilizing flexible small groups to best meet the students' needs. Brenda is one of those rare people that just seems to have it all. If we could have schools filled with teachers like Brenda Kamaligan, the world would be a better place. Congratulations, Brenda. Round of applause.
Hello, Lacy Township, welcome to the Forked River School. We are here to recognize our November Staff Member of the Month, Mrs. Kamaligan, who's a fourth-grade teacher here at the Forked River School. Let's go see her. Boys and girls, how are you today?
Good.
Are we having a good day of learning?
Yes.
Well, I have a special announcement for Mrs. Kamaligan. That's a special announcement. So, boys and girls, and Mrs. Kamaligan, I am happy to say that Mrs. Kamaligan was awarded the, as one of our Lacy Township School District's November Staff Members of the Month. Congratulations, Mrs. Kamaligan.
Hi, my name is Jessica Schaefer, and I'm the fifth-grade accelerated math teacher here in Lacy Township. I nominated Brenda Kamaligan for Staff Member of the Month for multiple reasons. She's an enthusiastic, dedicated, and motivated educator. Every time I would go into her class, she always had the kids working in small groups, doing multiple different things, and really teaching to their independent learning styles. I learned so much from Brenda over the past two years, and I really miss working with her this year. Brenda Kamaligan is one of those rare people that you find in schools. She just seems to have it all, and Lacy Township is a better district for having her in it, and I feel like I'm a better teacher from learning from.
Congratulations, Mrs. Kamaligan, you really deserve this, and you always make sure every student learns something important.
Congratulations, Ms. Kamaligan, you are probably one of the best teachers I've ever had, and you're really funny, and you really deserve this.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Nemick, we are here at Cedar Creek.
Oh, wait, hold on a second. Okay, all right, round of applause to Mrs. Kamaligan. And we'll make sure she gets her certificate tomorrow. Our second Staff Member of the Month is Patrick O'Neill. He is a custodian at Cedar Creek School, nominated by Mrs. Nemick, and Patrick is here with us tonight, so I'm going to ask you to come on down with us. So while he's making his way down, and he was nominated by teacher Mrs. Mantagna at Cedar Creek, and this is what Mrs. Mantagna had to say about you, Patrick. Patrick is an amazing head custodian. He is here first thing in the morning and still here later in the afternoon. He does whatever it takes to make the building a great place to be for both students and staff. His daily interaction with students also stands out because he takes the time to get to know them. Patrick is a great role model and a wonderful leader for his team, and by the way, he is the new head custodian at Cedar Creek, so congratulations, Patrick. And is your family up here as well?
Uh, yeah.
All right, round of applause to them too. Congratulations. Okay. All right, we're going to transition to November segment of the Lacy Now.
Do we have Patrick's video?
No video. Oh, sorry. Patrick, you have a video. You're not getting away with that. Sorry.
Tom's going to find it, hold on.
No such luck.
I'm just proud of Patrick O'Neill, our head custodian, who is Lacy Township School District's Staff Member of the Month. We're very excited. We've got some great kiddos here to surprise them. Hi, how are you? So, we are here to surprise you, you are the Staff Member of the Month. Yes. Awesome, we love having you here. When you're racing, the kid's outside, when you're racing around the building, help us out, we can't thank you enough, and we're so proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Wow, that's, wow. Thank you so much, that's awesome. I appreciate it. Wow, I'm going away.
Patrick is such a helpful man, and he's always gone above and beyond the call of duty. Whenever we've asked him to do anything, whether it be big or small, he's always taken to the initiative and does it, as well as with the interaction with our students here at Cedar Creek. He really helps them to feel involved and part of the whole community here at Cedar Creek. So, we love you, Patrick.
Congratulations again to both Ms. Kamaligan and to Mr. O'Neill. All right, now the Lacy Now.
Oh, yes, how we say one thing we like, and what we feel, and what we like.
Oh, that's, that's.
Okay, so I'm going to conclude my comments, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zalinski to do a short presentation, but some of the things that we've been talking about in our committee meetings is we have a lot of great things going on in our district right now, and we probably don't spend enough time talking about them, and it's going to become a theme for us. So, first slide, Mr. Whitehead. So, doing part one tonight, and, you know, I could have been here all night adding to all of the great things that are going on in our district. So, I'm going to do part one this month, part two next month, and then we're going to see where it takes us and keep going with it, but I included here the mission of our school district, and that is the mission of the Lacy Township School District is to inspire excellence in each student's educational experience and to instill strong values of pride and tradition. So, let's spread some good news. Next slide. All right, so we've been talking about this for a really long time. We finally were approved for our preschool expansion aid application. Our allocation was three point three million dollars, which is amazing, and right below that is our timeline, which we've already begun. So this past Monday, we had a staff orientation for all newly hired, newly hired preschool staff. On the sixteenth, actually that's today, we had our parent orientation at the Milpon Cafeteria, so I know Mr. Zalinski stopped by for that, well attended, right, Mr. Zalinski?
Yeah, they were all there.
And so, November seventeenth, which is tomorrow, is our preschool orientation for students and parents. It's going to look very much like our kindergarten orientation did back in August. Then on November twentieth, all of our current preschool students will start a full-day schedule. So right now, those students have been part of a half-day, and so they'll begin a full-day schedule to help them transition. And then on Monday, November twenty-seventh, not all of our classes, sixteen of our classes will open to our preschoolers, so these are our three- and four-year-olds. So while all of this has been happening, we have been slowly transforming the Milpon School so that we can eventually call it the Early Childhood Learning Center. Over the break, our Milpon lockers were painted the primary colors, so they went from a dark navy blue to yellows and purples and oranges. Orange is not quite so orange, so we're working on that, but it looks amazing. Our playground is coming along, so we still have a lot of projects that we have to accomplish, but we're definitely making some progress. Next slide. Just yesterday, we were informed that in addition to the preschool expansion aid application, we also were approved for a facilities project in the amount of one point four million dollars, and that's a little misleading. The state is going to cover about eight hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, five hundred and eighty thousand of that, or forty percent. The district is responsible for the other sixty percent, and Mr. Zalinski is going to talk about that a little bit. But the purpose of these monies is to enable us to upgrade the bathroom facilities for our preschool classrooms. So that is really good news, and we were really happy to have received that information yesterday. Next slide. In addition to those two grants, we also were awarded the New Jersey Department of Education's High Impact Tutoring Grant. Our allocation for that is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So you can see there in the first bullet, the grant is going to provide frequent extended periods of tutoring for students or small groups, subject matter that is aligned to state, our New Jersey Student Learning Standards, customized, data-driven. That tutoring is going to be performed by our own staff, so a lot of districts that were awarded this grant are following different models. Many of them are going to be using vendors. We've decided to go in a different direction and use our own staff. It's our belief that our staff are the people that know our students the best. I'm not knocking anybody else's model, that's just a direction that we decided to go in, and so we're going to get started on that very soon. So that is also fantastic news for us. In addition to that, next slide, some other good news. Our seniors recently participated in the College Board Accuplacer. The Accuplacer is a series of tests that evaluate student skills in reading, writing, and math to help college administrators place them in courses that match their skills, and we have, as you know, a partnership with Ocean County College. They helped us facilitate the most recent administration of the Accuplacer. The great news about this is that our seniors outperformed students in districts of similar size by a margin of one hundred points, and that may not make a lot of sense, and I'll explain that when we talk about our student achievement report again in the spring, but that's huge, and that is really good news for us. So I would be remiss if I did not recognize Mrs. Soto, Mrs. Frisch, and Mrs. Papalia for their due diligence in helping our students get there. So congratulations to our students and to our teachers. Next slide. And then most recently, the Lacy Patch just ran an article that Lacy Township High School was just voted one of New Jersey's best for athletes. The quote that I picked up there is "Lacy Lions have something to be proud of. Athletes at Lacy Township High School are one of the best schools in the state for sports," according to the latest rankings. So we were ranked fourth in the county and forty-fourth in the state, and that is definitely something to celebrate. So, that is part one of good news. Next slide. We will continue part two at our December fourteenth board meeting. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on, since I'm already up here, I might as well just stay, is Anthony could not be here with us tonight because our fall play is going on. Tonight was opening night, so I encourage our entire school community to get out there. The play is Puffs, and so, what is it about? So I quote, "Knowing that even if you're not the hero, if you've never destined to have some huge magical adventure, you are still important to everyone around you." That is the theme of the play. It is loosely based, or maybe not so loosely based, on Harry Potter. I know Mr. Zalinski already saw it.
It's a comedic take on it, it's quite funny.
A little comedic, okay. I have not seen it yet, I'm going Saturday night, but I encourage our entire school community to get out there. Finally, congratulations once again to our seniors of the month, Sila, Brody, and Kaitlyn, to our unsung hero, Jordan. Happy Thanksgiving, be safe, and that concludes my comments. their due diligence in helping our students get there. So congratulations to our students and to our teachers. Next slide. And then most recently, the Lacy Patch just ran an article that Lacy Township High School was just voted one of New Jersey's best for athletes. The quote that I picked up there is "Lacy Lions have something to be proud of. Athletes at Lacy Township High School are one of the best schools in the state for sports," according to the latest rankings. So we were ranked fourth in the county and 44th in the state and that is definitely something to celebrate. So, that is part one of good news. Next slide. We will continue part two at our December 14th board meeting. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on, since I'm already up here, I might as well just stay, is Anthony could not be here with us tonight because our fall play is going on. Tonight was opening night, so I encourage our entire school community to get out there. The play is Puffs. And so, what is it about? So I quote, "Knowing that even if you're not the hero, if you've never destined to have some huge magical adventure, you are still important to everyone around you." That is the theme of the play. It is loosely based, or maybe not so loosely based, on Harry Potter. I know Mr. Zalinski already saw it.
It's a comedic take on it, it's quite funny.
A little comedic, okay. I have not seen it yet, I'm going Saturday night, but I encourage our entire school community to get out there. Finally, congratulations once again to our seniors of the month, Dyla Brody and Caitlin, to our unsung hero Jordan. Happy Thanksgiving, be safe. And that concludes my comments.
Am I doing the preschool budget next?
Yes, sorry.
Do you have that, Tom? And actually, it's me and Ms. Ormsby, please.
Actually, why don't we give our students a moment?
Oh, yeah, if you guys want to go, go.
Congratulations, guys.
Yes, I know, that's what we say all the time.
Good night. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good night. Good night. See you next month.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We still go for lunch. I don't know how to contact you though. You have my number? Okay, text me and I'll tell you when it is, all right?
Thanks for coming, congratulations. All right, so we're just going to do a quick overview of the preschool budget. We've been asked a lot of questions about the preschool budget.
I can't hear you.
We can't, we can't hear you.
Okay. All right, we're going to talk about the preschool budget, is that better?
Ah, a little bit.
Is that bad? All right. We've been asked a lot of questions about the preschool budget and where the money is being allocated to. So, as Dr. Pereira said, the allocation that we got was 3.3 million, but the actual budget is for... No. The actual budget is $4,278,900. You can go to the next one. So the allocation of funds is between staff salaries and benefits, learning resources and facilities and maintenance. So staff and salaries is the majority of the budget. It gets eaten up very fast. It's 3.3 million of the budget, which is basically the allocation from the state. And then the rest of it is our portion of it. So learning resources is 9% at $344,000, facilities and maintenance at 4% or $180,000, and then the administrative cost is 10% or $441,000.
So maybe like as you're explaining this, like you said, like the grant award that we have is 3.3 million dollars. They, we get, how I think school funding should always happen is you're paid a fixed amount for every student you have. That's how preschool works. So the more students we have on the regular education side of things, the more money we get. Okay, so we'll talk about that, we'll talk about expansion next year. So, this year, we decided, and how the building works and how we're able to work, the 20 classrooms that we opened will be 233 preschool students, three and four-year-olds who do not have IEPs. Okay, that's a difference. However, we have almost 100 students that have IEPs, but some of them can be serviced in the regular education classrooms. So we're going to fill those classrooms with some seats that are IEP students. We contribute that money out of our general fund. It just moves from one line to the other, who's always there. That's why you see here, this adds up to more than 3.3, 3.4 million dollars. Makes sense? So far? Okay.
Can I just add something real quick? Can you guys just talk? I can see the head spinning out here and taking notes and whatnot. Our biggest amount is staff salaries and benefits.
Always.
Can you explain how extra in this grant, what the state is requiring for us to do, powers on the bus, hiring a parent, there's a lot of things, this isn't just teachers. Can you explain a little bit real quickly to the public?
Every classroom, every classroom has a required instructional aide and a teacher, obviously a teacher. Okay, the way we do it, because we don't have all full-time aides, we split it, so there are some, there's splits. So in lots of cases, we've got to leave out that difference with the full-time aides, where they have a morning aide and an afternoon aide. Morning aide, instead of hiring a bus aide, the morning instructional aide rides the bus, the afternoon instructional aide rides the afternoon bus. So we're really bridging a lot of those gaps. The state looked at our model, they were kind of like, wow, that's really creative, that's a good idea, to have the bus person be the classroom person, the classroom person be the bus person. So they thought it was good, we'll see how it all works out. Apparently not everybody does that. So yes, we have the instructional aides, we're also paying portions of salaries for people in the building with preschool, okay, because they're doing all preschool work. So a good example would be like the custodian. A custodian has to go to preschool classrooms, but also has to go to kindergarten classrooms. So some of our custodians are paid, related to two-thirds, one-third split. So two-thirds of their salary comes out of PEA, one-third of their salary comes out of the regular budget, the regular operating, which is an example. But some people are fully in PEA and we don't cross lines. For example, the preschool instructional coach, coaches, which I'm a huge advocate for coaches, as you guys all know that. So this is a required position in the PEA. That person is only in PEA, their full salary and benefits, as we pointed out, is in the PEA side of things. So, okay.
Talk about the, so there's also required administrative positions that we are required to have through this PEA model, that the state requires us to have. So there's something called a PIC, a PERS, and a CPIS.
Right, and they're not administrative positions, but they are instructional positions. So we are also required to have a full-time administrator.
Right.
Okay, because we have 20 classrooms, that's a full-time administrator. We have Miss Donahue doing most of that and we're going to have another person doing the other pieces of it, so that they're going to work together. The state, yay, liked our model that we had a backup person, all right, in the model that we're trying to work on. And not everybody's hired yet, but we're almost done, because we're fully open by January 2nd. Okay, so that's, as Dr. Pereira pointed out, you know, we have most of our classrooms opening now, the rest will be open, have to be open by January 2nd. And we're fully on, we're going to be doing that, you know, based on the salaries you see.
When you say you have an administrative position now at the school, is that a principal?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not an additional principal?
Oh, no.
Someone, okay.
Yeah, we're utilizing, the creative thing we're doing is we're utilizing our model, utilizing our people, and then the reinforcement of our great bands has allowed us to do this. Now, there is some filling that we're doing, but it's all going to be PEA funded. It's not going to come out of our general budget. We're not adding, for example, we're not currently, we're not adding any people to the administrative unit. As we get bigger, we might have to do that, based on the equations that you see here and how we're doing things, but not right now.
So here's my confusion then, if we're adding an administrator who's already there, is there a stipend being given?
All out of PEA. The actual monies will come out of the PEA. Principals don't make any more money, but we've got some others doing that, but it'll all be PEA.
Okay, so...
Yeah, more duties equals more money usually.
All right, just checking.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. You have a question?
No question, huh?
I have a question.
Okay.
So you're talking about like child study team, so if you have to hire...
No, child study team has nothing to do with PEA.
Okay, so those 100 students that have IEPs...
Already being serviced by our current unit.
Okay, just wanted to ask.
Yep. Yes, Ed?
There needs to be an extra person on the bus, morning and afternoon.
What was the question? Yes, yes, we have an aide riding the bus on all of our preschool buses. Okay, for kindergarten, so they're there as well. Like they get, they get, as an example, that now are, we've been doing that right now. We've been filling in all of our kindergarten buses, in most cases, have a person with them on the bus now, if we wanted that right away. There's still, in a couple cases, they're not the board comp buses, that may not be the case. I have a couple drivers who are like, iron fifty drivers, and they don't, they don't have aides.
She gets out of her bus seat every morning to make sure that these three students that get a bike stop, to make sure that they're both...
But now every bus will have an aide requirement. So now, we're going to put an aide back on that bus. Yep?
Okay, so now, at this point, now we're starting to create the 24-25 budget. We've already submitted the application for the 24-25 PEA grant. We have to already put in for the enrollment projections. We're projecting 300 students for next year's enrollment, which includes, that includes the, no, it doesn't include.
No, that's just the regular, it's 67 more next year. Which again, is a requirement of doing this, we have to build ourselves at every three and four-year-old. That's a requirement, so we have to keep expanding until we reach that moment, which is, give or take, it's about 400, three and four-year-olds. It's a little more than 400, but not everybody will come to us, it just doesn't happen that way, because we talked to other districts. So, we're going to add five classrooms next year, which we have in Milpon, Tech Wing, there's five classrooms there, and that'll be our expansion for next year, and then we'll see where we go the year after. Probably about three more the year after will be what we'll be able to handle without building something, or without cutting up something, or, you know. So, that's our expansion plan, is to get to that point. And each of those comes with money, so we're going to pay each student, each regular resident that shows. Okay, Ed, you got your question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the state aide that accounts for 40% of the bathroom upgrade, is that federal money?
State.
The state money, because it's in paper on Tuesday, that Murphy was distributing federal money, and had the same percentage, 40%.
I think there was an article that he's saying it is tied to...
It's tied to federal?
Yeah, there was an article, I don't know if it's a raw article or not.
We're not on the list of towns, that's why I was curious.
No, we were not.
We were not on the original list.
No, we were not.
Oh, so we got added to it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I...
Because we were all disappointed for about two days and we got...
And then we got a letter yesterday.
Yeah, no, because I just, I was just, just read that.
No, you're right, you're not seeing this.
And if you would, would you just, again, repeat that number for the total budget? You said, you're giving a bad alternative. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
All right, that's it.
You have one?
Students does Milpon hold? How many students can be in Milpon?
Oh, God, that, because Milpon, it has 900 if we wanted to. It's a, it's a former, former middle school building that could house at least 900 or more. And because the preschool grant only allows 15 per classroom, and kindergarten only allows 24 per classroom, it's going to house a lot less bodies, but the usage of it is going to be much more, I don't know, the word I should use is much more profitable right now, because the district is gaining all these kids in their education and it's paid for by, basically by state facilities and not by... It's paid by tax in general, okay, for all, but now the local taxes are what it's... Ed? Thank you, Ed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zalinski and Ms. Ormsby. And I'm done with my comments, thank you. We're President Downing.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll have public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the board president. Comments will be made one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. The portion of this meeting is for public comments only and there will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. So at this point, is there anyone who would like to make a comment, public comment? Regina?
Regina Descenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Page three of the agenda, there's a settlement agreement in the Rozzi case and Mr. Rozzi couldn't make it tonight, but there is a correction. The docket number is correct, but the venue should be Ocean County Superior Court, not OAL. OAL is for the ethics cases. And today, I learned the Rozzi and Markatello cases that are with OAL Judge Buck had a Zoom call at 3:00 PM. I couldn't get any additional info, but at least we know those four-year-old cases are moving along.
So state that again, Regina, please, it's not the New Jersey Office of Administration?
It's Ocean County Superior Court.
Okay.
It wasn't OAL. The other cases are with OAL. On October 12th, I received a copy of docket number DRB 23-092 in the matter of Christopher M. Sussbe, who used to be the board attorney. It took a long time to get this case settled, but I do have some comments and some quotes from the case. Mr. Padula, are you aware of the case?
The disciplinary review board case?
Yeah, you are, okay.
It was, it was a topic of much discussion at school boards conventions.
It was?
Yes, everyone unanimously thinks it's wrongly decided.
Really?
Yes.
I appreciate that knowledge, sir. Well, 30 years of expertise failed to prevent the board from operating behind my back. And the words from the disciplinary review board on page 26, specifically respondent violated his duty of loyalty to the BOE as a whole by drafting the memorandum on behalf of certain board members and without Descenza's knowledge. And then on page 29, the DRB goes further and says, respondent violated his duty of loyalty to the entire BOE by assisting a faction of members in their effort to harm Descenza, a sitting board member who was deemed a political opponent. It's been discussed before that board members are not protected by confidentiality rules. My disturbing behavior should have been discussed in public for free, instead of behind my back utilizing the board attorney and public tax dollars to have me investigated. Thousands of dollars in legal fees was wasted, but not on this particular case, because this took place in another venue. Also, many times, district employees asked me, why was the husband of a teacher the school board attorney? The disciplinary review board gave an answer to that question as well on page 32 and 33. Additionally, we find respondent violated RPC 1.782, charges and connected with his involvement with the district's personnel matters, specifically counts two and three of the formal ethics complaint. Each charged respondent with having violated RPC 1.782 by providing legal services to the BOE related to the LTEA, of which his wife was a member, and to the LTASA, which had supervisory authority over LTEA members, including respondent's wife. I just wanted to give a couple of quotes, and then on November 6th, I received a letter from the Office of Attorney Ethics stating that they agree with the October 11th, 2023 majority decision of the disciplinary review board recommending discipline of an admonition for respondent's violations. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Excuse me. Seeing none, we'll move on to board committee reports. Mr. Plena, would you like to start with finance?
He's not there.
Where'd he go?
He will not start.
Oh, okay. Cheryl, you want to do curriculum, while I'm waiting?
No, okay, sure. Okay, Lacy Township School District Board of Education Curriculum Committee Minutes. It's Curriculum, Special Education, Health and Wellness, Community Relations, LTA Liaison and Technology. Minutes, November 14th, 2023, at 4:00 PM at the board office. The meeting opened at 4:00 PM with the following in attendance, Linda Downing, myself, Cheryl Armatto, and William Zalinski. The meeting was adjourned at 5:00 PM. Curriculum, 24-25 preschool application, additional five classrooms, increased enrollment by 60 students for 24-25. Mr. Zalinski spoke about the application that is due for next year's preschool. The application will include five additional classrooms at the Milpon Elementary School. The district will add classrooms until the district reaches a goal of approximately 450 three- and four-year-old preschool students. 23-24 CUSAC District Performance Report. Mr. Zalinski highlighted the district performance report that is required to be sent to the county superintendent's office in advance of our CUSAC review, which will take place... which will take place in the spring. The DPR is self-assessment, which will in turn be shared by the county office. The result of the CUSAC review will be shared after the state issues the CUSAC report over the summer. Teacher and administrator evaluation models for board approval. District-developed evaluation model, NJPEPL, that's Principal Evaluation for Professional Learning and Principals and Assistant Principals. Mr. Zalinski shared the models for teachers and principals that are used for evaluation, and asked that the board approved at the November meeting as it is annually required. Out-of-state travel, winter track competition. Mr. Zalinski asked for the committee's approval for the winter track team to travel to the indoor facility on Staten Island for the dates that they may qualify per their winter schedule. Out-of-state workshop, Lee Emery Trainer CEUs, Manchucket, Connecticut. I think I pronounced that properly. Okay. Mr. Zalinski requested the approval for the out-of-state workshop for Lee Emery. RTO maintained his CEUs as an athletic trainer. No Place for Hate Banner Signing Activity at LTMS, November second, 2023. Mr. Zalinski shared the middle school banner signing ceremony that was conducted by the No Place for Hate Committee at the middle school. Ocean County No Place for Hate Conference at OCC, November fourteenth, 2023. Mr. Zalinski shared that the high school No Place for Hate Committee attended a conference at OCC as part of their activities for the year. Special education. Mr. Bond and Mrs. Krawowski met with CPAC leadership on eleven thirteen to discuss goals for this year, the school year. Mr. Bond will be presenting at the CPAC parent meeting on eleven fifteen at six-thirty P.M. in the high school media center. Topic will be an overview of the district's NJTSS initiative and how it relates to special education. Technology. Coordination to move interactive flat panels to Forkett River and Lenoka Harbor in place. Physical moves to be completed by the maintenance department. Once complete, Forkett River will complete, will compete, will complete, and Lenoka almost half-complete. Remaining needs will be what is left at Lenoka and the high school. First phase of preschool staff onboarding completed at orientation. Community relations. November fifteenth at nine-thirty, intergenerational visits, the school play performance, puffs. Personnel. District supervisor for preschool, PEA funded no cost to district. Mr. Zalinski highlighted the need for this position that would be funding using PEA state aid. LTEA, nothing to report. Health and wellness, nothing to report. Other. LTSD Settlement Agreement, docket number OCNL00176823. Name change, Sharon Sylvia to Sharon Ormsby. And next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January ninth, 2024, at 4:00 P.M. That's it.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks.
Kim, you want your policy?
Yes. We had our meeting November fifteenth. It was myself, Mrs. Armato, Mr. Conady, and Dr. Pereira. We had a few discussions. We were following up on the homeschooling and them joining us for our athletic program. Dr. Pereira led us, led the discussion about the NJSIAA and other guidelines related to homeschooling. So, as of now, we're, we're just gonna keep it the way it is, and we'll see if, in the future, if it comes up again, we'll follow it up with more discussion. Then we discussed coaching eligibility for administrators. The committee discusses topics as relates to local guidelines and contractual obligations. Dr. Pereira's gonna reach out to administrators, see if there's any interest. If there is, then we can move forward with that as well. We have a policy tonight that's on for, on the agenda. The committee reviewed Exam for Cause, Policy 3161 and Policy 4161. They have been rewritten to better outline the process a school district must use when the Board of Education Superintendent wants to require a physical or psychiatric exam of a school district employee, whenever a staff member shows evidence of deviation from normal physical or mental health, to determine the staff member's physical and mental fitness to perform with reasonable accommodations, the position the staff member currently holds, or to detect any health risk to students and other staff members. We also discussed Policy and Regulation 5537. It is for voluntary random testing for student alcohol or other drug use. This policy we already have in place, we're just adding sixth grade, since sixth graders were moved into the middle school. So, not, the policy did not change. Co-curricular. The committee discussed the recent niche rankings as it related to LTHS and being ranked as one of the best for athletes. The committee discussed various ways of relaying this great news to the public. We also wanted to celebrate the athletic department, to get that recognized out to the community. It's just something great that should be recognized by everybody, so excellent job to them. And we discussed race notices, settlement agreement, and the board workshop tentative dates. And that is it.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Mr. Plino, finance?
Yes, thank you. So, the finance committee, consisting of myself, Ms. Downing, Ms. Claus, Dr. Pereira, Ms. Ormsby, Mr. Zalinski, we had that on November fourteenth. We started around four-thirty, ended at six-thirty. We spoke about the STEM Room project being updated here. Punch list has been, most of the punch list of things that had to be fixed after the construction has been completed. There's been an ongoing issue with countertops. Apparently, they were put in, they were damaged, and they need to be fixed. Our fire alarm project that's been ongoing, that too, punch list was completed. It provided the contractor, provided to contractors some weeks ago, so that should be coming to completion soon. The high school HVAC project, we were updated on that by Ms. Ormsby. The units are approximately ten weeks out. They had a kickoff meeting about it, and discussion followed. And I just want to add with that, with the HVA system, with the rod grant. So, months ago, we reported that we received a rod grant. However, in that rod grant, we were hoping for money to replace all the HVA system at the high school and some other places, but it came back. We didn't get that. So, you know, Ms. Ormsby is working with our architect through the state to find out why and what happened. And anything that works with the state, it's a lengthy process. So, as of yet, it's been months we haven't heard from the state as to why we, that was not included in our rod grant. So, as of now, a lot of the HVA systems that we are looking to replace are on hold because of that money. We also spoke about the Rozzi Oprah Settlement Agreement. There has been a settlement. For those that aren't familiar, Mr. Rozzi dropped a lawsuit on us about an Oprah request that something happened with the timing or wording. And just so everybody knows, to come out of finance, no matter who drops a lawsuit on us, even though the lawsuit is covered under the JIF, it, it costs the district at least ten thousand dollars upfront to, for legal expenditures. So, do the math, ten lawsuits, a hundred thousand dollars we have to come up with, which comes out of our pockets for the students. So, really, who suffers? The students. CUSAC, the other committees discussed that. Ms. Ormsby led a discussion about our district performance review. So, we have to self-evaluate, put it in a system, and then the CUSAC, the state, you know, comes in, we're evaluated with that. So, that's in the process of being done. It's a lengthy process. We discussed a cheerleading coach. Apparently, we have an abundance of freshman cheerleaders this, for the winter. It's unusual, we haven't had this many, but we have quite a bit. So, the discussion about bringing on an extra coach for the freshmen, because we don't have a freshman program, we did away with it, but there's a lot of freshmen here, so the discussion about bringing it back. There's a question about money for the stipend, where's that coming from? But I understand that there's some leftover, if I'm not mistaken, leftover budget money from the athletic director's account?
Yeah.
That's able to cover that?
Yes.
Okay. We talked about the RBTs. So, the RBTs are, are behavioral, what's the actual term for them?
Registered Behavioral Therapists.
Right. Registered Behavioral Therapist. So, we currently, as a district, we have an outside third party that assists us with our special needs children. They have RBTs and behavioral therapists. We're starting a program, the board looked into, starting a program, to do in-house training of our PARAs, to get them certified as RBTs, so we can filter out a third party and, and save a lot of money doing stuff in-house. So, we're in the process now of, of doing that, so that was a discussion. We also spoke about the district supervisor position that Mr. Zalinski put on the table for us at the Milpon School. So, for those, you've heard it already two or three times, but just to explain that again, we, the state requires us now to have a second person in charge at the Milpon. We have Mrs. Donahue, but the state's requiring us to have a second one, a second administrator. So, we are going to use somebody from in-house, and that person's gonna be given more duties, their current duties plus the Milpon duties, so we're gonna increase that with the, the funding of the PEA to cover this person's title. So, we were told that if we lose the grant somewhere down the road, hopefully we never do, but that person will go back to the regular duties and their, their salary.
Just make, the state doesn't say two people, it says one whole person. But remember, Ms. Donahue's role is split, because she has kindergarten as well, so we have to make that one whole person.
All right, so we need a whole person.
Right.
Thank you.
And one other correction.
No, no more.
RBT is Registered Behavior Technician, not Therapist.
Technician.
Technician.
RBT, thank you. We talked about, at a solemn discussion about penetration testing. So, this has to do with, I believe, our IT security. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, on how people can't penetrate our systems, right?
Correct.
So, we've talked about that. We also talked about the name change, Ms. Ormsby, and that's it. We conclude at six-thirty, and our next meeting will be December fourth.
Thank you. Thank you much. Dr. Pereira, you have anything else to comment?
I do not.
Okay. So, on behalf of the entire board, I will make the board comments tonight. First of all, I'd like to, on behalf of all of us, to congratulate our seniors of the month, Brody and Syla, and our vocational senior of the month, Caitlin, our unsung hero, Jordan. So, congratulations to them. This weekend, tonight it started, is the Lacy Township High School Theater Company presenting puffs, as we talked about before. So, you can still get tickets. It's tomorrow night and Saturday night at seven o'clock, and Sunday at two o'clock in the high school auditorium. So, if you want to come, there's still tickets available. So, I think it'd be, every, every show he puts on, they put on, is amazing, so hopefully you can join us. Want to thank the trunk-or-treat people who organized that. It was a huge success. Congratulations to all who organized it. Dr. Pereira, thank you for your presentation. A lot of good things. And Frank, if you want to jump into what I'm gonna say, a lot of good things are happening. We were getting a lot of money, the preschool, the rod grant. But remember, we're still in a very dark place. Next year is the last year of S2. We're gonna start with, in the basement when it comes to money. So, please, I know when all this happened last year, we had a lot of people calling our congressman, talking about the funding that needs to be changed. So, please keep those letters coming. We can't let them forget what they did to us in Lacy. So, keep it going. Frank, you want to add anything to that?
Well, just, just so, you know, we're, we're gonna be starting off, I'm thinking about four million in, in, in the red, come this budget, upcoming budget year. And although that S2 is ending next year for us, we don't know what the state's gonna do after that. They may change the formula and stuff like that, so there may be an S3. So, we don't know if we're gonna be out of the crosshairs. So, there's, it's just, we have to always, from here on out, look that we're always gonna be in a red to start. And there's gonna be a lot of cuts, there's no two ways about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I want to congratulate, on behalf of all of us, Kim, for your reelection, and Dan, Bell, if you want to wave, so everyone knows who you are. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you. And Frank, we want to thank you, as Dr. Pereira already did. We'll, we'll get you next month, but we want to thank you for your years of service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We made it exciting, didn't we, Frank?
Absolutely.
Um, let's see. Oh, one thing I'd just like to let everyone know, if you haven't been there, if the corner of Lake Barnegat Drive and Haynes, you'll notice there's a traffic light that was just put up. It's not functioning totally yet.
Actually, they just turned on.
It's blinking now.
Oh, it's blink, well, blink, it's blinking. It's not, it's not functional as far as red light, green light, yeah. But it is blinking. That's a really dangerous corner, in my opinion, and a lot of others. And we have a lot of students walking in that area. So, this is a great thing, that it's finally, finally getting started. So, thank you for that. Let's see, what else? That's it. So, on behalf of all of us, we'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And please remember all our servicemen that are not at home sharing with their families. Keep them in your prayers and thoughts. Does anyone on the board have anything else they want to add that I didn't?
I just have a question. I, I don't know if I missed it, because I wasn't, last month I wasn't here for it. Have we heard anything about the Western and Haynes expansion? Do we not, Dr. Pereira, have you heard anything? The county gotten to you with that, about expanding the lanes?
No, I have not.
Uh-uh. Okay.
They were working there for a while.
Yeah.
But they didn't do anything, yeah. Okay, so let's move on to new business, please. Be patient with me, I forgot my glasses. Okay, could I have a motion then for number one, A, meeting minutes on page two?
Motion.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Still on page two, list of bills, item number two for November 2023. Motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes, but I need to abstain on 950927, 955336, 953843, 953065, 95314, 953739, as supervisors, and then, I employer, 289299 and 283300.
Thank you. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to abstain in 211210, please.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and I'm abstaining on bill number 953843. Mr. Dow?
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Items three and four on page two, transfers and S1701.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
On page three, items five through nine, sale of solar renewable energy credits, settlement agreement, New Jersey State Cooperative Purchase, District Technology Backup Support, sale or disposal of assets, and list, use of facilities.
I just want to, six as amended, for State of New Jersey Superior Court docket.
Could I have a motion as amended?
It should say Ocean County Superior Court. Is that right?
No.
No, Superior Court of New Jersey.
Okay.
Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page four, number ten, out-of-district placement revision for the 2023-24 school year.
Motion, Peters.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Page six, items fourteen through twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five, I'm sorry. Motion, please, for items twenty-four and twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Two, two motions, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call? Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Two, two motions, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call? Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Page 6, donations, item B, like in boy. And on behalf of the Board of Education and the district, thank you for your generous donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do I have to be on here, Sharon?
No.
Okay.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes, but I need to abstain on the Lacey Football Foundation donation.
Thank you. Mr. Polino?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Page 7, item C, programs and curriculum. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. D, professional days, workshops, and travel. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.[1620.98]